Go ahead and start. Linda, go ahead. We'll call the meeting to order. And then Linda, go ahead and do a roll call to determine if we have a quorum. I see that we do. Let's go ahead and make it official. Linda, can you hear me?
Yes. Deputy Mayor Willie Steele.
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Sandra Melton.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Teeman.
Here.
Councilmember Josh Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Pam Howitt.
Here.
Councilmember Darren Holland.
Here.
City manager Robbie Hefton.
Here.
City Attorney Brandon Shelby.
Here.
Yes, we have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We'll declare the meeting open. And we'll begin with a pledge and invocation by Councilmember Sandra Melton. Sandra, if you'll lead us.
You're pleased. Join me in the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of America. One nation, indivisible,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll join me in prayer, please. Lord, I just thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to come together for our community. Lord, I thank you for our first responders and for those on the front lines during this pandemic. I pray you keep them safe. I pray for the people, the family and friends that have acted by this sickness. And I ask you to guide and direct our decisions here this evening. Lord, I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay. Did everybody have the opportunity to review the minutes from the council meeting of March 16th, 2020, and the called city council meeting of March 30, 2020?
I move to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Got a couple of motions in a second. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. All right. This time, we'll open public hearing. Linda, if you'll read item B1 for us, please.
2289, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to renew a specific use permit to allow a preschool learning center in an R1 one-family residential district at 1211 Blanton Drive, Lot 5, Block 8, Western Hills Edition, Delmar Hill owner, Shaniqua Hill representative, Little Zebra Child Development Center tenant, and Underwood Drafting and Surveying Surveyor, providing for repealer, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. All right, Scott.
Okay. P&amp;Z recommends that this S U P for daycare be approved with a 6-1 vote, subject to the staff review letter and limiting the S U P to Shaniqua and Delmar Hill. This has been in effect since 2016, having been in operation. We've had no complaints.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. So if there's anyone in the public who might be listening in, if you would like to speak on this item, you can raise your hand electronically to speak on this. Anyone? Okay, I don't see anyone. So Linda, if you'll read B2 for us, please.
An ordinance of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow permanent makeup microblading in a C2 general commercial district at 1735 Texoma Parkway, Suite 105, being 5.34 acres in the J.B. McIner survey abstract number 763, Eisenhower, Texas Home Limited owners and Aaron Teague tenant applicant, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yes. This specific use permit for permanent makeup, which requires a tattoo license, P&amp;Z recommends this for approval with a 7-0 vote, subject to the staff review letter, and tying the specific use permit to guarantee. We had no opposition.
Okay. It's the same, the same way on this item. If there's somebody that is dialed in to make a comment, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you.
We did have one person raise their hand. I'm not sure if it was for the previous item or not, but I can allow them to talk at this time.
Okay, yes, please. Okay, are they unmuted?
Working on it. Okay, DHH, you're now unmuted if you'd like to speak.
I don't hear anything. Are they unmuted, Sean? Is anybody hearing anything, or is it just me?
No. They are unmuted, though.
Yeah, they, Delmar, you're now unmuted if you'd like to speak. Okay, I guess they're having technical difficulties. I'll go ahead and mute them again. We can come back to them at a later time.
Okay, so nobody spoke on B2 either. So Linda, if you'll read B3 for us, please.
Ordinance 6291, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit amendment to allow heavy equipment sales and rentals and wash bay with stucco and metal finishes as shown in the exhibit in a C2 general commercial district, O1.2 Sam Rayburn Overlay District, at 910 South Sam Rayburn Freeway, being 9.37 acres in the Samuel Blagg survey abstract number 56, 6M Holdings Limited owners, Sunbelt Rentals Incorporated tenant, Dustin Tippett's representative, UPI Builders contractor, and Underwood Drafting and Surveying Surveyor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
Yes, this specific use permit is to update and make improvements at the existing Sunbelt Rentals place on Sam Rayburn. Their improvement include putting stucco in front of the existing building, improving the parking lot, and erecting a wood fence 25 foot from the front property line. Board of Adjustment granted variance for that fence at the last P&amp;Z meeting. P&amp;Z voted 7-0, 7-0 to approve this, subject to the staff review letter. We had no opposition.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone dialed in who'd like to make a comment on this item? Anybody here to speak to the council on this item? Okay. If not, Linda, if you'll read item B4 for us, please.
Ordinance 6292, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman amending Section 8, subsection 5A, ordinance number 2280, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow two event centers in a C1 retail business district, O1.2 Sam Rayburn Overlay District, at 1,000 North Travis Street, Suites P&amp;S, being 4.296 acres in the J.B. McIner survey abstract number 763, Villasenor Centoya Properties LLC owners Alberto Villasenor, representative and Helby Wagner Surveying Incorporated Surveyor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Scott?
This specific use permit is at Cam Corners to add some event centers. These centers are in the rear of the building. They have access to the front. They plan to improve the lease spaces, improve the parking lot, paint the back of the building. P&amp;Z granted this request 7-0, subject to the staff review letter, and limited this S U P to the current property owner and to only allow family-oriented events.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here on the line that would like to speak on this item? Sean, do you see anybody?
Delmar from Frontier is, or at least their email, keeps raising their hand, but I'm going to go ahead and lower it. They seem to be having technical difficulties. I'm not able to hear anything from them.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody else. So the next two items, B5 and B6, are related. So Linda, if you'll just read these together.
Ordinance, okay, ordinance 6293, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman closing and abandoning a portion of the Branch Street right-of-way lying between Blocks 54 and 55 of South Side Edition in Grayson County, Texas, as being shown on Volume 94, Page 135, deed records, Grayson County, Texas, and being more particularly shown in the Exhibit A attached heretofore and made a part hereof for all purposes, conveying the interest of said right-of-way to the surrounding property owner Kirk D. Allen, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law. Ordinance 49, or ordinance 6294, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sherman closing and abandoning a portion of the East Street right-of-way lying between Blocks 55 and 56 and the planted alley within Block 55 of South Side Edition in Grayson County, Texas, as being shown on Volume 94, Page 135, deed records, Grayson County, Texas, and being more particularly shown in the Exhibit A attached heretofore and made a part hereof for all purposes, said property to be maintained as a utility easement, conveying the interest in said right-of-way and the surrounding property owner Kirk D. Allen, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Let me ask Engineering Director Wayne Lee. Wayne, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Both of these are related. They abandoned right-of-way not being currently utilized south of South Sherman Street. This is being done to make way for a 51-lot residential plat that complies with our ordinances and requirements and is actually Item E8 on tonight's consent agenda. Also, part of this new plat is in our EPJ, and Item E2 is an annexation also related to these items.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment on this item? That may be calling in? Okay, I don't see any. So at this time, we'll close public hearing and consider the adoption of the ordinances. Council, any questions on these?
I have a question about 6292, the two event centers. And that is that these event centers, it looks to me like the entrances will be from what is right now used as an alleyway. That they are at the rear of the building where there are deliveries done for Dollar General and also for the Mexican market that is there. And I don't really see where they can add parking in the rear of the building. It'll really have to be on the side. I guess that's fine, but I just had a question as to, are, you know, how this would work? Will the events take place during the daytime? Could they possibly disturb the businesses that are there, depending on what kind of events there are? I just would like a little more information.
Hey, Mayor, let me also interject and say, for any participants who want to speak, star nine is the shortcut. So if there's any participants or other attendees that want to speak, that's the way that you electronically raise your hand in this, in this app. So if you want to speak, make sure to do star nine in this.
Okay. I've got a, I've got a couple that have their hands raised. If we, let me know when we're ready to move to them.
Okay. Scott, do you want to answer Pam's questions?
There was no limit on the hours at the zoning meeting. The applicants said they were fine with being limited to family-type activities. And that they would paint the back of the building, make it look better. Parking is for the home center. And the numbers did work out at the 100 to 200-foot for the event centers. They would access from the front parking lot as well as the rear.
So they will have access through the front as well as the back? Because that didn't appear to be, okay.
These spaces were created when a former owner cut small spaces out of large spaces, and this was what left over. And they thought that would expand into them, but that never did happen. So these new owners are trying to make use of what they had.
Okay, I, we're not going to, there's not going to be a problem with that because I just have observed that through the decades, that this has always been used as a back alley as such, behind the building. So that's fine if, you know, if they are much aware of that. Okay.
Mayor, do you want us to finish asking our questions or let the person that has their hand raised ask theirs first?
You know, I'm kind of thinking about that because this is really our time to discuss these items. I guess we could stop and go back and I'd have to open public hearing again. Do y'all want to continue going discussing these, or do you think?
Yeah, May, I would suggest, since we're having some technical difficulties, that we let the people who had raised their hand. I know Delmar was trying to get his hand raised on his agenda item on B1. And there may be others as well. So Mayor, I just suggest that we go back and allow them to speak.
Okay. So Sean, if you'll just unmute. I see, is there two hands raised?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just unmute, unmute one of them and then we'll go to the next.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, yes. Okay, and your address, Delmar?
12, 11 Blanton Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And we would just, just want to let you know we were on the call.
Okay, in case we have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, Delmar. Thank you.
I'm going to open up the second caller.
Okay.
All right, they're, they are unmuted. Their caller 0091. If you'd like to speak now.
That was Delmar.
Oh, that's Delmar as well, okay.
All right. Okay, so council, let's continue our discussion. So Pam, did we answer your question satisfactorily?
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, I, you know, I'm all for improving that area. That would be wonderful. It just, I was concerned about it being behind the building and the aesthetics of it and all. But if they're going to take, improve it, then I'm, I'll be fine with that.
Okay.
Mayor, I did have a question for you about school for the Little Zebras.
Yes.
They've come in front of us a few times, and we've issued some temporary S U Ps. And I just want to make sure this is going to give them their permanent S U P so that they're not going to have to come back in front of us again.
Yeah, Scott, can you address that?
Yes, this, they did not put a limit on the time limit or review. They did tie it to Shaniqua and Delmar Hill. So if they were to stop it, then that would be the end of it.
Okay, so this will be it?
Permanent.
Yes, okay, thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to go back to the 6292 there on.
Yes.
Now, Scott, you have said several times, Scott, about it being a family event center. How are you going to know if that isn't and what would be the repercussions if it's not?
They agreed to that at the zoning meeting, and so that was in a motion. And it's in their S U P that it being a family center. They were specifically asked if they were going to have strippers there, and they said no. But they did not want that type of business there. This would be more for weddings and family reunions and receptions. That type thing is what they told us at the zoning meeting. That's how it was represented. So that's how the board voted and took their motion.
Okay, so you're saying if, if we have complaints or such, then we can go back on this?
Yeah, if it was criminal or something wasn't family-oriented and it was a problem, the specific use permit could be revoked. It would take some action, but it could be done.
Yeah, so we cannot, we cannot allow an M1 activity in a C1-zoned area. Would that be a fair assessment, Scott?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I have is on ordinance 6290. In the ordinance, it's going to state that it does stay with the person that's actually gotten the license for the microblading.
Correct. Yeah, Aaron Teague, yes.
Very good.
Okay, Scott, I have one more question, if I could, on 6292. Now, and that is, once you, once you mentioned weddings, that usually involves alcohol being served. Is that going to be allowed at that location?
Sherman is.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, council, good discussion. Any other questions or comments on these proposed ordinances?
I make a motion to adopt the ordinances as written.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Linda, do we want to do a roll call vote?
I think we probably should.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Steele?
Aye.
Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson? Councilmember Stevenson? We'll come back to him. How about Councilmember Howitt?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Stevenson?
Josh?
Wake up, Josh.
Hey, Josh.
Right here.
Josh.
Unmute and vote, Josh.
I haven't really heard anything in the last like 10 minutes, just sort of weird, weird noises, but, if y'all can even hear me.
Look here.
We're voting on the proposed ordinances from public hearing. And the motion is for them to be approved altogether. And we were waiting for your vote. Unless you have some discussion.
I think he's having technical difficulties.
Yeah, I vote to approve. I vote yea on all.
Okay, very good.
Good job.
All right, very good. So the ordinances are approved. Thank you, council. All right, we are to the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine. It will be enacted one motion without discussion unless a council member or citizen requests a specific item to be discussed and voted on separately. These items include C4, C5, D1, E3, E4, E5, E6, E7, E8, and E9. Would anybody like any of these separated for any reason? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion on the consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Or do we want to do roll call, Linda?
Brandon, what? Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Linda.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Come on, you can do it. Yes.
Councilmember Howitt?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to proposed resolution 6609. Linda, if you'll read that for us, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company's LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Authorizing participation with Encore City's Steering Committee. Authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting services. Finding that the city's reasonable rate at case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Brandon?
Yes, this is our annual rate increase denial for Encore. They sought to increase rates by 75.9 million, which is about 88 cents per customer. The steering committee has recommended that we deny that rate increase and enter into negotiations with the law firm we use in Austin, Lloyd Gosling, to negotiate a lower increase.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Council, any questions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Linda, you want to roll call it?
Yes, who was the second, please?
I was.
Okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor Steele?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Yeah, boy.
For Howitt?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Proposed Resolution 6610, authorizing execution of a street and utility agreement with the Sherman Independent School District. Clint, tell us about this item.
This agreement will allow Sherman ISD to participate in some of the infrastructure running the school. There's a gravity sewer line south of 1417 that's being extended to serve both the school and the village development. The total cost of the sewer project is about $1.1 million, with the school participating in about 36% or $400,000. The city is also extending Steeplechase Drive. This extension will improve mobility for the future development and also eliminate a long driveway on the north side of the high school. This street extension will cost about $230,000, with the school participating in about 25% or $58,000. Both projects are planned to be done by August of this year.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. Council, any questions on this item or discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Is it my understanding that this will be the only, these fees will be paid to the city by the school district? This dollar?
Yeah, Clint, can you address that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then I read in here where it says that after this fee that they will not And then I read in here where it says that after this fee that they will not have to pay any other fees associated with this development?
Yes, they wanted, the wording in that contract, they wanted assurances that we wouldn't come back and ask them to pay for a portion of, say, West Travis Street or Moore Street. At the very end of that, part of that contract, it says that we will still be able to charge them standard utility fees like water usage, super usage, and storm drain usage. That was a piece that went back and forth to make sure that they were gonna continue to have to pay for the things that they were using, but not necessarily have to pay for, for larger CIP projects in that area.
Right. So if we run across any other problems, it's on the city and they aren't required or expected to pay any other fees?
If it's related to infrastructure that we constructed, yes. If it's onsite, it's a, I mean, it's, it's part of their development and they'll have to deal with that.
And this is just with the school district? We're not adding any other developers in this part, correct?
No, it's between the city and the school directly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other questions on this item? All right, if not, Linda, you want to do roll call for us?
We need a motion.
You motion.
Oh, that's right. Yes, yes. I apologize, Counsel, on getting ahead of myself.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve as written.
Thank you, Josh.
I second that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Holland. Now, we'll do the roll call. Apologize about that. I was getting ahead of myself. Go ahead, Linda.
Deputy Mayor Steele?
Aye.
Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is approved. Thank you. All right. Linda, if you'll read proposed resolution 6611 for us, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sherman, creating a capital improvements advisory committee, providing for its membership, establishing and adopting procedural rules and foreign duties associated therefore in accordance with Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code regarding impact fees. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed was noticed and is open to the public as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Clint?
As we move forward with the impact fee study, a, the need for a capital improvement advisory committee needs to be created by the council. This committee, as, as written in the resolution, will be comprised of the P&amp;Z Commission members and a one-appointed ETJ member. This committee will serve as advisory committee to counsel on the adoption of a plan use plan, a capital improvements plan, and a proposed impact fee amount. Staff is continuing through all this to work with Kim Lee Horn on developing and finalizing the impact fee program. We hope to bring additional items to you guys for action late May and early June with the hopes to have everything finalized with the program by this fall.
Okay. Thank you, Clint. Counsel, any questions or discussion? Okay, can we get a motion on this item?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Linda?
Deputy Mayor Steele? Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item is approved. Thank you very much. All right, we are down to E1. Linda, if you'll read that item for us, please.
Consider approval of a revised annexation scheduling plan for adoption of 6.0 acres located east of Lambert Road at the intersection of Meadow Lake Drive and Lambert Road adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the City of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and directing the Department of Engineering Services to develop a service plan for the area to be annexed upon approval of the annexation scheduling plan.
Okay, thank you. Linda, Brandon?
Yes, items E1 and E2 are both annexation scheduling plans. Both of these pieces of property want voluntarily are being annexed. They want, want to join the city. E1 is a revised plan because you, Council approved a plan for this property back in March, but because of the way we're meeting now, we weren't, weren't able to go forward. But the hearing dates for both E1 and E2 will be the same dates and they will be at future council meetings. So no special meetings are required.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Counsel, any questions on item E1? Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Linda?
Deputy Mayor Steele?
Aye.
Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item is approved. Linda, if you'll read E2 for us, please.
Consider approval of the annexation scheduling plan for adoption of a 10.25 acre located west of East Street, south of Sherman Street, and east of Montgomery Street adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the City of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and directing the Department of Engineering Services to develop a service plan for the area to be annexed upon approval of the annexation scheduling plan.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Brandon?
Yes, this is a annexation scheduling plan for another voluntary annexation and the dates are the same as with an E1.
Right. Okay, Counsel, any discussion or comments on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Linda, if you'll do a roll call for us?
Deputy Mayor Steele?
Aye.
Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember? Councilmember?
Aye.
Holland?
I didn't hear my name. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you said Holland. Aye.
Okay, I've got everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, we are down to media questions. Do we have any media on the line? I guess not. All right, at this time, Counsel, we have a point, remove, or consider qualification to board or commission item for the Main Street Advisory Committee.
I move to the reappointments.
Okay.
So I get Sean Van...
Is that Sean Vandever?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go, go ahead, Sandra.
Thank you. Reappointment for Sean Vandiver, Tommy Sue, Howard, Halma, Nancy Sim to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or I guess we need a roll call. I'm sorry. I'll get used to this eventually. Go ahead, Linda.
Deputy Mayor Steele?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Melton?
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Counsel comments. I'm not sure how we can do this in order. Does anybody have any, any, any comments for the group?
I would just like to say commendations to Councilman Teeman for being out there in that parking lot, braving it to be out there in front of City Hall. I appreciate that, Councilman Teeman.
Yes, that's very brave. Thank you, Sean. Okay, anyone else, anything for the record?
I would like to ask if we're having anyone go out and check those businesses that we talked about on Lamar Street where I'm seeing numerous towers stacked up and cars not being worked on. And do we have anyone working those businesses? Scott?
Yeah, let me, let me take that and I can have Terrence jump in as well. So the short answer is yes. I don't know whether you've noticed it or not and I don't know if, I guess I can go ahead and say the names of some of the, the businesses, but Wilco, for instance, the car repair place there on Houston Street has been hauling off cars and cleaning up their place as well. And so that one, you know, all of those that we talked about before, either specifically or just by reference of their location, we are making slow but steady progress on those, is what I would say.
I appreciate it. It doesn't look very good.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'd say, I'd like to say I appreciate the staff because I've been receiving several phone calls on that this week. So I know they're out beating the streets. I bet I've gotten three or four phone calls from different property owners asking questions. So thank you guys for taking that direction.
You bet.
Okay, so Sandra, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? All right. Well, if nothing else at 5:42, can we get a motion to?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion is second. Linda, do we need a roll call to adjourn?
I don't think so. No.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
See y'all.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
See y'all.